Session. At this point in time, I'd like to call on Chaplain Trey Gooch, who will come forward and lead us in our prayer and then our place of the flag. I'd like to ask all members and all guests, please stand at this point in time. Commissioner, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chairman. This is a quick announcement. As an honest, we are about to move today. We can have one piece of calculation by now.
I think he's currently in the hospital at St. Thomas, room number 405. I don't think he would mind me announcing this. If y'all don't mind, could we send him a card, a personal card from yourself? I mean, don't just Facebook him. It's always special still to get a card and open it up when you're feeling the way I'm sure he's feeling. So, let's go to our Father in prayer. Oh, Father, we love you and we praise your name. We know that all good comes from you. And Father, as we start our last year in this term, may we reflect back on the promises and the commitments that we made and looked within to see how we have accomplished that. And let's get back on our final year here during this term to really taking a deep dive with our constituents to get to know them so that we can truly represent them. Father, we are asking you today for patience and knowledge. There are people out there who are attacking others on social media, and they have no idea what they're talking about. Their only intent is to be mean and spiteful and to cause drama. And Father, we ask that you would give us patience to forgive and the knowledge that you know what's in our heart, and if we follow you and mimic you, that people around us will see you through us. And Father, we want you to, we want to dedicate this prayer to Commissioner David Gammon and the health issues that he's having. And Father, we know that you can do it. You've done it before, but would you send the Holy Spirit down to him and comfort him and bring him back to wellness so that he can come back to us and continue to be a part of our family along with his family at home? Father, we know that we have sinned and fallen short, but we also know that Jesus intercedes on our behalf and that you forgive, and for that, we are so grateful. In this through Jesus's name, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Three white stars on the field of blue. God keep them strong and ever true. It is with pride and love that we salute the flag of Tennessee.
I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight, all of our guests and members. Glad you're here, like everybody else is healthy. So, Madam Clerk, if you would, we're ready for roll call. Members?
Commissioner David Gammon. Commissioner Piercy.
Here.
Commissioner Rather.
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Commissioner Buchanan.
Here.
Commissioner Kush.
Present.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Gurley.
Here.
Commissioner Blair. Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Virgil Gammon.
Here.
Commissioner Harris.
Here.
Commissioner Dodd.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Present.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Here.
Commissioner Key. Commissioner Gooch.
Here.
Commissioner Serrino.
Yes.
We have a quorum, 18 present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I forgot to mention Commissioner Blair is doing granddaddy duty tonight, and he's got two grandkids that he's taking care of, so maybe he's listening or watching on TV. So, we miss you, Commissioner. At this point in time, I'd like to call on Chairman Pro Tem Jeff Phillips for approval of the minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Katrin. I've reviewed the minutes. I find them to be in order with the exception of one misspelled word, and that's been corrected. And with that correction, I move that we dispense with the reading at the minutes be adopted as presented.
You've heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Cook. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Now's the time for public comments. I believe we have two public comments tonight. The first is Mr. Ron Alley with the Arts of Rutherford County. He's with the Rutherford Arts Alliance. Mr. Alley, please keep your comments to three minutes, and if you would, as you address the body, give your name and address, and you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor Katrin and Commissioners. My name is Ron Alley. I reside at 6310 Lee Avenue, Murfreesboro. I am the founder and CEO of the arts nonprofit Carpe Artista in Smyrna, and also a founding member and current board member of the Rutherford Arts Alliance that was started about two years ago to look at the arts from a county viewpoint, a connective viewpoint. That was our goal, to begin to look at all the art entities that were there and look at ways that we could connect and make them stronger for our community and make them stronger across our community going through all the municipalities. We advocate for all aspects of our cultural community, promote Rutherford County as a cultural and heritage community and destination, and communicate the social and economic impact of the arts. Going back to the arts and economic prosperity study that was done in 2018 showed from a small portion of the arts organizations within our county that were polled, a $31.2 million annual impact. That is a significant impact, ladies and gentlemen, to the economics of Rutherford County. Unfortunately, there is no place in our county governmental structure that focuses on the development altogether of the arts for our county that we're aware of. And so, we want to come and open up those conversations and advocate that there be a place that is a focused place within our county government that begins to look at that impact and magnifying that impact for our county across the county. So, we just are grateful to be here, and we are wanting to advocate that we start those conversations.
Thank you, Mr. Alley. Rutherford County, we're blessed. Yes, sir, Commissioner McAdoo.
Uh, did I miss reading?
Yes, sir.
Did I miss?
Yes, sir. I think that's what Chairman Pro Tem did, so we're good. And let the record reflect, Commissioner Key is here. I was just going to say that Rutherford County, we're blessed to have hosting here. Started last night, and for the next two days, the Governor's Hospitality and Tourism Conference is being held at the Embassy Suites, which goes into the tourism and the arts as well that reflects who we are as a community. And we were just glad to, I was glad to welcome them here on your all's behalf and all the citizens of Rutherford County. Make those people welcome because tourism is huge in our state and it's huge in our county because it brings in dollars and we don't have to build schools. It's just good when people come here and leave their money and go back home. We appreciate that. Next, we have Tara Stone with American Red Cross Services. Ms. Stone, if you would, please come forward, and must be Red Cross season. You're recognized, Ms. Stone.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here tonight. Do you need my address and all that stuff too?
Yes, ma'am, for the record, please.
Okay, thank you. Tara Stone, 2619 Charter Court in Murfreesboro, Tennessee. I am Executive Director for the Heart of Tennessee Chapter of the American Red Cross, and while I've been in this position since December of 2019 with COVID, really haven't been able to be out and meet with you guys in person, and appreciate the opportunity to be here and tell you a little bit about our service delivery. I'd like to thank Commissioner Serrino, who is on our board, for suggesting that I come in and present to you tonight. Our chapter office is located at 501 Memorial Boulevard. It's also the site of our blood donation center that's open six days a week. Our chapter serves 10 counties, including Rutherford County. Here tonight, on behalf of myself, Emily Gerard, our Disaster Program Manager, and our almost 200 volunteers. Our volunteers really make it possible for us to carry out our mission and better serve our communities. The American Red Cross has five lines of service, but tonight, I'd like to highlight our local disaster services. When we are contacted, can y'all hear me okay with them? Okay. When we're contacted, the Red Cross responds to home fires to help meet the immediate needs of the individuals that are affected by that home fire. Our volunteers will make sure that the family that's displaced has a safe place to stay, make sure that if they need any medical items replaced, that we help them with that. You may not get out of a home fire with your eyeglasses or medications you need on a daily basis or other items, and we have volunteers that will work with them to get those replaced as quickly as possible. Also provide mental health services and spiritual care when needed. Many times, we also provide them with short-term financial assistance to help meet their immediate needs. Case workers assigned to help them start the recovery process as a loss like this can be very overwhelming. We appreciate the fire departments when they contact us to respond to a single-family or multifamily home fire so that we can be there to help support those individuals. And while we hear so much about the response to disaster, as we've heard, you know, with the floods and hurricanes here lately in the news, you don't tend to hear as much about being prepared, and with September being preparedness month, I wanted to share with you that the Red Cross is working to prepare individuals to be resilient when a no-notice disaster strikes such as a home fire. We're participating in community events to connect with residents and share our no-cost preparedness education courses such as Be Red Cross Ready. We're also in the local schools, teaching home fire safety to students in kindergarten through fifth grade. And through partnerships with several local fire departments, we're in communities together installing smoke alarms and teaching home fire safety. We hope that our outreach will create a more prepared community. I'm leaving you with our local impact report on all of our lines of service. Hope that you'll reach out to me with any questions that you may have, or if we can partner or support you in any way. And again, thank you for allowing me to be here for a few minutes to share about our services.
Thank you, Ms. Stone. We certainly appreciate you coming. We're very proud of the Red Cross and Rutherford County. It's always been one of the stronger chapters in our state, so thank you for, again, informing us. Thank you, Commissioner Serrino, for serving on that board and everything you do, and because I know when disaster hits, Red Cross is first to step up, and they serve a great purpose in our community. Next, I'd like to call on, we'll move to item G on your agenda. Call on Commissioner Reed, come forward for elections and confirmations. Commissioner Reed, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item one deals with the listing of notaries. They may be found on your iPad, Commissioners. Mr. Chairman, I move to confirm the election of these individuals as Rutherford County notaries.
Have a motion. Is there a second? I have a second. Commissioner Phillips and others. Any further questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Item two, steering would like to confirm Renee Curtis, Michael Curtis, and William Harper to the Board of Zoning Appeals with terms to expire October 2026. I so move.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second. Commissioner Rather.
At Steering Committee on the Board of Zoning Appeals, there was a great deal of discussion about an applicant that didn't turn in on time. My understanding from the legal department, steering could not recommend to the commission because they did not turn in the application. However, the full commission, someone can nominate from the floor with the opportunity for the other applicants to also speak because they've gone through this before. So, I'm going to make the motion to nominate Zane Cantrell to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Second.
Have a motion. Who is the second?
Piercy.
Second, Commissioner Piercy. Have a motion and a second, so that gives us four applicants for three positions. Have a motion and a second. We'll need to confirm that motion for Mr. Cantrell to be added to the slate of applicants. We're going to go to voice vote, and hopefully I can determine based on voice without objection. All those in favor of adding Mr. Zane Cantrell to the list of applicants signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Now that brings us to the next step.
Mr. Chairman, we have a motion on recommend, so can I, can I want to make sure we understand that the Steering Committee recommends Renee Curtis, Mike Curtis, and Bill Harper?
That is correct. So, the three that came out of Steering Committee are the ones that came from Steering Committee that would have been Renee Curtis, Michael Curtis, and William Harper. And now, by this motion, Mr. Zane Cantrell has been added to that. So, we're going to go through voice vote will be the process that we follow. I want everybody to write all four names down. Renee Curtis, Michael Curtis, William Harper, and Zane Cantrell. Everybody have those? We'll start on District Two since Commissioner Gammon's not here. So, Madam Clerk, we're choosing three. So, Madam Clerk, are you ready? Okay.
Commissioner Piercy.
Renee Curtis, William Harper, Zane Cantrell.
Commissioner Rather.
Renee Curtis, Michael Curtis, Zane Cantrell.
Commissioner P.
Mike Curtis, Renee Curtis, Zane Cantrell.
Commissioner Cook.
Um, Renee Curtis, Mr. Cantrell, Mr. Harper.
Commissioner Buchanan.
Renee Curtis, Michael Curtis, and Zane Cantrell.
Commissioner Kush.
Cantrell, Michael Curtis, Renee Curtis.
Commissioner Reed.
Michael Curtis, William Harper, and Zane Cantrell.
Commissioner Gurley.
Mike Curtis, William Harper, Zane Cantrell.
Commissioner Blair, present. Commissioner Allen.
Renee Curtis, Michael Curtis, Zane Cantrell.
Commissioner Stevens.
Zane Cantrell, Renee Curtis, and Bill Harper.
Commissioner Johnson.
Mike Curtis, Mr. Harper, and Zane Cantrell.
Commissioner Virgil Gammon.
Zane Cantrell, Mike Curtis, and Renee Curtis.
Commissioner Harris.
Mr. Harper, Ms. Curtis, and Mr. Curtis.
Commissioner Dodd.
Renee Curtis, Michael Curtis, Zane Cantrell.
Commissioner Phillips.
Renee Curtis, Harper, and Cantrell.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Renee Curtis, Michael Curtis, and Zane Cantrell.
Commissioner Key.
Renee Curtis, Michael Curtis, William Harper.
Commissioner Gooch.
Renee Curtis, William Harper, and Zane Cantrell.
Commissioner Serrino.
Renee Curtis, Michael Curtis, Zane Cantrell.
All right, we're going to pause for a moment and let the clerk give us a total, and I'll compare that. Our attorney side also, make sure those numbers match. Our Finance Director, we've got three adding up. All right, members, the total is Renee Curtis at 16, I have Michael Curtis at 14, we have William Harper at 10, and we have Mr. Zane Cantrell at 17. First, I'd like to congratulate all three for coming on. Mr. Harper, we want to thank you for all your service to our community. We thank you for everything that you've done, serving on that committee, and we'll have other openings for your service, I'm sure, for some other openings that, anytime somebody wants to volunteer and serve and give their time, we're going to find a place for you. Yes, sir. Thank you so much. Commissioner Reed.
Item three, steering would like to confirm Keith Bratcher and Larry Jernigan to the Beer Board with terms to expire October 2024. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion and a second. Commissioner Piercy, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Item four, steering wishes to confirm Gary Wosniewski to Code's Enforcement, Adjustment, and Appeals Board with a term to expire September 2024. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion, second. Got several seconds. All right. Craig Harris, I think, was first on that. I'm Secretary. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Item five, Mr. Chairman, steering would like to announce one vacancy for the Code's Enforcement, Adjustments, and Appeals Board. Item six, Mr. Chairman, steering wishes to confirm the appointment of Judicial Commissioner John Wiggers. I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Serrino. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Item seven, steering would like to confirm the appointment for Judicial Commissioner Ethan Cocteau. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion, second. I have a second. Commissioner Rather, any objection? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Item eight, we wish to confirm the 2021-2022 Ethics Committee for Rutherford County. There are Ted Beatty, Craig Harris, Rhonda Allen, Robert P., and Joanna Medlin, which are reaffirmed every September. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion. Who's on the second?
For to Gammon.
Commissioner Gammon. No objection, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I wish to announce at this time, we have items nine, 10, 11, 12, and 13. Nine being the confirmation of our 2021-22 Commission Chairman. Item 10, the confirmation of our 2021-22 Chairman Pro Tem. Item 11, the election of our Commission Chaplain. Item 12, the election of our 2021-22 Standing Committees. And item 13, Standing Committee Officer Election Process for 2022. Mr. Chairman, I now yield to the Chair to conduct these items of business.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to call on Chairman Pro Tem to come forward. I'll relieve myself to allow Chairman Pro Tem to conduct this confirmation.
Thank you, Mayor Katrin. Item on the agendas, confirm our, confirm Bill Katrin, which was nominated, intensively elected last month as the Commission Chairman. The floor is open for that confirmation.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
No.
Motion to confirm carries.
Mr. Chairman, can I request a recorded vote?
We have a request to record the vote, so Madam Chairman, if you would, we'll be Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Cast the vote.
Seventeen yes, two no.
Thank you, Chairman Pro Tem, and thank you for your confidence once again, members. I certainly appreciate that, and we'll continue to work on your behalf and the behalf of the citizens of this community. Next, we have the confirmation of our 2021-22. Chairman Pro Tem.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Johnson for Mr. Phillips, Commissioner Phillips, and a second by Commissioner Buchanan. Any other nominations? Seeing none, this is confirmation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next, we have the election of our Commission Chaplain. Craig Gooch have a motion and a second by Commissioner McAdoo, and then Commissioner Cook. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next is item 12, election of our 21-22 Standing Committees as delivered by the Steering Committee. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. I need a motion and a second on the Standing Committees. Have a motion. Commissioner Piercy and a second by Commissioner Rather. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All those opposed, say no. Motion passes. Standing Committee Officer Election Process for 2021.
Mr. Chairman, we're at public comment time.
Standing Committee Officer Election Process for 2021, is there a motion? Or the process? Legal advisers, as we go into public hearings at this point in time, we'll come back to the, to that Standing Committee Officer Election Process. So, at this point in time, we'll move into our public hearing at 6:30. We'll call on our Director of Planning, Director DeBassi. At this point in time, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, Commissioners. Hope everybody's doing well tonight. We have three rezoning requests for your consideration tonight. First is for property located at 3624 Last Cassis Pike. The existing zoning is office professional. Proposed zoning is residential medium density. This is a down zone. Subject property was zoned R15. This was under our older zoning resolution and was granted a conditional use permit for our chiropractic office by the Board of Commissioners back in November of 2007. There's a copy of the attached conditional use permit with your agenda materials on your iPad. When we replace the previous zoning resolution with the current zoning ordinance- When we replaced the previous zoning resolution with the current zoning ordinance and map that we are under now, which was effective in January 1st of 2013, we zoned the property Office Professional, as that zoning district most closely matched the use at that time. The property was sold by the owner of the chiropractic office back in 2019. The current owners wished to sell the property for single-family use. However, that is not a permitted use within the Office Professional district, so the applicant has asked for the property to be rezoned to RM, which is pretty much what R15 was back prior to 2013. There was very little discussion on this item at the Planning Commission. There's no development proposed with this particular request. They really just want to use the building as a house. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. This was unanimously recommended for approval by the Planning Commission.
Any questions for Mr. DeBassi? Any questions? Seeing none, we will move into our public hearing. Is there anyone desiring to speak for or against this issue? If you would, please come forward, state your name, your address, and if you're for or against. Seeing no one getting up to come forward, I declare the public hearing closed. Rutherford County Board of Commissioners back into session. Is there a motion? Commissioner P.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the recommendations from the Planning Commission, as written.
I have a motion for approval, have a second. Commissioner Phillips, any discussion or any questions? Without objection, and all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Director DeBassi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our second rezoning request tonight is for property located along Old Nashville Highway. The existing zoning of this property is both Commercial Neighborhood and Commercial General. They are looking to do a planned unit development for an indoor, excuse me, indoor/outdoor soccer complex, approximately 12 acres in size. Again, the applicant is proposing to rezone this property. Staff comments are a little different than what I just read, as at that time, the legal description hadn't been received by staff, so it says 11 acres in your staff comments, but it's about 12, closer, it's closer to 12 when you look at it. A similar request was made to the Board of Zoning Appeals back in February of this year. Although the indoor complex is a use by right in the Commercial General Zone where it is located, the outdoor fields did require special exception approval. Following the public hearing on that use, the application was denied. The BZA minutes are attached with the agenda packets. Again, this is on your iPad. The applicant has since shifted the use to the northwest a little bit, and has made this application. According to the information provided in the applicant's pattern book, and this pattern book is also included on your iPads as a separate attachment from the agenda, the soccer club currently operates out of the structure at Oakland High School. They'd like to move the facility to this location. Hours of operation would be 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. weekdays, 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. on weekends during the warmer months. Of course, the colder months would entail usage of the indoor facility only, but operating hours would not change. They are proposing to build an approximately, again, it's a little different than what was in your staff comments, but it's 45,000 square foot building, that would include a small office, restrooms, and the indoor field. They are proposing two outdoor fields, one in front of the building and one behind it. They were proposing lights on the back field. They have since said that they are not going to do that. There were several questions regarding this particular application at the Planning Commission, and it has actually deferred at the Planning Commission and then came back through. There was some discussion about turn lane improvements. At the meeting last month in August at the Planning Commission, they were showing turn lane improvements. It was a right turn only in the revised pattern book, which is the one that's on your agenda packets today. The applicant did also discuss coordinating with the Buddhist temple events that would be held at the soccer facility. The outcome of those, there's a separate attachment on your iPads that has information on both the turn lane, what they are proposing. They are still proposing to do the right-hand turn lane for Phase 1, but then adding the left turn lane for Phase 2. Phase 1 would be the indoor facility. Phase 2 would be the outdoor fields at a later time. There's also a document in there regarding a meeting with the Buddhist monks about the activities. There was some concern at the Planning Commission about coordinating the events with the soccer complex, with any that may happen at the Buddhist temple. Apparently, based on the letter that was submitted, it's on your iPads for your review, that issue has been resolved. Again, we already talked about the lighting. They have committed to not do any lightings, any light on that rear field. They weren't proposing any on the front field in the first place, so that's another concession that they are asking to, or are willing to make for this. There was quite a bit of discussion, again, at the Planning Commission about this. After discussion, the Planning Commission did ultimately recommend denial of this application. It's unusual when we see an application come from Planning Commission with a recommendation for denial, so not much has changed in that regard. They still need a favorable vote. Based on TCA, the Tennessee Code annotated, that vote has to be from a majority of the entire membership of the county commission, which would be 11 votes. So that's really the major change that I can see for that. Further conversation with the applicant, of course, indicate they wanted to take this to the full Board of Commissioners despite that recommendation, which is why we're here tonight discussing that. Those are the comments that I have for right now. The applicant's representative is present. I'm sure he'll have some comments he'd like to make. Again, the concept plan and the pattern book are both on your iPads for your consideration and review, and I'll be available for questions.
Any questions from the Commissioners? Commissioner Dodd.
Thank you, Chairman. Doug, you may have said this in so many words, but to your knowledge, are the revisions to the pattern book, do they satisfy the primary complaints from the Planning Commission?
One of the concerns, again, had to deal with the coordinating with the Buddhist temple next door. They appeared to have done that. The turn lanes, again, they are, they are showing that. Again, they are breaking it into phases. I think there was a little bit of concern about that. There was also one other thing I meant to mention. There was some concern regarding the water availability at that property. They do have a letter in there from their engineer that's looked at that, their, I guess hydraulic engineer, not necessarily the civil engineer, which says that they understand that they are going to have to make improvements to the building, sprinkling and those kind of things. So they feel that they've got this at least handled from their end. Now, of course, if this were to be approved, this is going to have to have a site plan, a review by the Planning Commission, so we'll get another shot to look at several of these, of these items.
Other questions from Commissioners? Seeing none, and I'll call the Rutherford County Commission meeting into recess to hold a public hearing on their request. Our public hearing is now in session. Anyone desiring to speak for or against, if you would, please come forward. State your name, your address, and if you're for or against.
Hello. Mayor Katrin, Commissioners, my name is Clyde Round, with Hudson Steel Engineering. I reside at 228 Bluegrass Circle. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to get before you with our request to have a plan development approved for this location, for the soccer club, and our representative of Mr. Jorge Lopez. As was mentioned, we had a negative recommendation from Planning Commission, and after working through that process, we just realized there are several outstanding issues that I would just like to address. Mr. Lopez has been looking around throughout the county to find a good location for this type of facility. As was mentioned, they currently work out of Oakland High School, their indoor facility. So his full intention from the get-go was to have an indoor facility, and he felt like this area, based on it having commercial character already, was a good location. About a year ago, the property, a little over a year ago, the property was rezoned commercial, both Commercial General and Commercial Neighborhood, and Mr. Lopez saw this as an opportunity to find some property that he thinks it would work towards his goal. So we've been working diligently to try to help Mr. Lopez, yeah, see that, that vision become a reality. And so the soccer club, as Doug mentioned, is proposed for a 45,000 square foot indoor facility. That is really our Phase 1 development. So it's the indoor facility, as well as the parking associated with it. That would be Phase 1. The Phase 2 portion of the facility would be the addition of two outdoor soccer fields and additional parking. The reason we've asked for the turn lane to be in two phases is the primary goal of the turn lane is obviously for safety, but the biggest demand for that turn lane will be once the building is filled, once the whole project is built out. Mr. Lopez's primary commitment right now is to build the indoor facility, which we feel like the right turn lane, as well as the current situation on Old Nashville Highway, will suffice in meeting the goals of that needs for turning into the property. But as far as working through the process, that was, that was mission critical, was making sure those turn lanes were part of the pattern book. We have committed to the right turn lane in, in Phase 1. We've committed to the full turn lane scenario in Phase 2. The second priority that was really important was that the owner, upon this being approved, would agree to sprinklering the building. We know that the fire flow at this location cannot supply, the hydrant would not be sufficient for meeting the fire demands of the building, so Mr. Lopez would have to go ahead and sprinkle the building. At Mr. Stimsky's request, we did consult with a, basically an engineer who specializes in fire protection. They feel like the flow is adequate for the need for sprinkling the building. However, we will have to commit to some kind of pressure tank related to that, because the building's 45 feet tall, so there's a pressure loss related to that. So he said water flow is sufficient, however, there will be some booster pump related to getting the water on top of the building. The third priority that was really important was meeting with the temple. Personally, I was not at that meeting, however, one of our representatives was, and Commissioner Srento was as well. We have a letter documenting how that meeting went. I think it was very favorable, and they were, there was no issue as far as the temple was concerned with us being at this location. And I actually heard that they are concerned that their music may impact the soccer fields, so we weren't really concerned about that. The fourth concession that was made was that the lighting would be removed from the field that's furthest away from all the residences. We felt like that that could be a possibility, to have that field lit, because it's quite a distance from the nearest house. But after looking through the process and just realizing that's important for us to make sure that this can happen, Mr. Lopez was, was willing to, to pull back the lighting component to that last field. And so therefore, the owner who's been primarily concerned about that, one of the adjacent owners, I think that'll help, hopefully can help appease some of her concerns with that, that lighting that would occur. And then, and working through this process, I just want to say that there's been several other shifts that happened. Originally, we had the building in a different location that was much closer to the adjacent residence. We're actually on two different parcels. The parcels that we are on, Ms. Laurie's here tonight, we are literally wrapping around her property. Our two parcels went on her right and on her left. Mr. Bruce, who was the owner of the property, was willing to work with us, and we shifted the parcels that we are actually acquiring. So now we're no longer, we still are adjacent to Mrs. Laurie's house, however, we're no longer wrapping her property. This scenario's been very positive for us. It allows us to have more access room and more room to move the driveline away from any adjacent property, so we feel confident that that was a good decision. But we want to thank Mr. Bruce for being flexible in the offerings of allowing us to get that other parcel. And lastly, I just want to say that there's a lot of people to thank in this process. It's been a lot of work to try to work through the issues that were outstanding from Planning Commission. I feel like we have, we've addressed those issues. There's still some that need to be resolved, the turn lane, the study into that turn lane. We basically put a concept together. The turn lane needs to be expanded a little bit more to accommodate the design speed of the road, so we're working on that. We don't have the will serve letter from Mr. Stimsky yet. He's in the process. He told us he's about five weeks. We're five projects behind him on getting that will serve letter, but we do feel like the engineering letter supports our, our desire to sprinkle the building. And then, you know, for this to happen, and, and, you know, we're not coming here just thinking we can bowl this thing through. We really, we're coming here tonight believing it's a really good project, and we feel like it's an appropriate location. It's just a matter of working through those details that we're not working through in Planning Commission, so I appreciate the opportunity to be before you. But the last person I want to thank is that, you know, as a, as a Commissioner in this, in this county, it's a lot of work. I've come to appreciate everything you all do. I, I'm learning a lot through the process myself, but Mr. Key's been foundational through this process, whether he's, I believe he's for the project, but, but he's been very neutral throughout the process. He's been very open to trying to hear both sides of the story. We had multiple meetings related to this project. We've had multiple phone conversations related to this project, so I just appreciate his time and commitment to try to make sure that it's fair and equitable through the process. So Rod, thank you very much for that. I'm available for any specific questions you may have. Again, we appreciate the opportunity to come before you, and we'd love to answer anything you may have in order to help us to move forward.
Commissioner Phillips.
Is it proper for me to ask a question during this public hearing?
Yes.
Very good. You asked for it. The Planning Commission overwhelmingly rejected this. You, in behalf of the applicant, chose to bring it before this full commission with a negative recommendation and not allow the Planning Commission the opportunity to look at all the adjustments that you've made. I find that objectionable, and as a result of that, I'm not going to support this.
Other questions for the presenter? Commissioner Dodd.
I debated whether I asked Doug or Clyde, so I think Clyde's an expert in this field. Is there any timeframe on your submissions thus far that would prevent you from presenting to the Planning Commission next month, or the month, or the month after for that matter? Is there a time limit on your application?
Mr. Dodd, there's not necessarily a time limit on the application. Mr. Bruce has been extremely patient through this process. He's got another buyer behind this one. And so we've, he's, we, you know, we, he shifted the property. So I would say the only pressure we're feeling is the fact that we have a seller who has, he can sell this property a lot quicker than this process has taken us for what it's already zoned for. He mentioned that there's a record service behind us that, that has been knocking on his door. So, so anyways, that, the answer's, I am not positive. I've been feeling some pressure, because we've been asking him to, to help us walk through this process, and we've had to walk through quite a few hurdles to move through it.
Other questions for the presenter? Commissioner Rattlin.
Thank you. Clyde, one of the things that we've talked a lot about are those turn lanes, and you and I had a conversation about that. I'm concerned about tying them specifically to Phase 2 and not letting there be some sort of a safety trigger, that if we observe that they're needed sooner than Phase 2, that they can happen. And so I was hoping that there'd be some language in here that either defaulted to either the road superintendent, the planning director, the county engineer, someone who could say that it was time for that to come in. And so it just makes me a little nervous to greenlight this and say, we don't know when, but whenever Phase 2 is, that they would make the road safer, because that's one of the most important, roads and drainage are the two most important things that we do whenever we look at any development.
Ms. Allen, we spoke to, Mike and I, we spoke tonight, but we were trying to get some exchange today and yesterday. We, we got a concept drawing for the turn lanes. The question, your question's a great question, is what would catalyze those turn lanes if it's prior to a Phase 2 development? And we will have some language in the pattern book. We don't really know. I'm not sure if that would be based on some kind of demand that is noticed as a result of the facility. It's really a situation where it would probably be language that would be in the book. We're not, we're not precluding having language in the book that related to this. Just don't know exactly how that language would look to say if, is a turn lane specifically associated with Phase 2 development, or is a turn lane a process that could happen anytime during the, you know, during the operation of the facility? We just need to work out the language on how to present that in the book that would catalyze that need.
Commissioner Reed.
Clyde, I had the same questions that Commissioner Allen here. I think when we talked, we, I was understandable, our understanding that both turn lanes would be there, and that's what I was looking at, because I, we all know the, that traffic pattern of, of that particular highway and what we're dealing with right there. And I think when we discussed this, I was thinking that all those turn lanes would be there. And if we're just talking about whenever, nilly-willy, if we're just going to stick that other lane in there, I'm not for that at all, and I've got a problem with that, too.
Just to bring clarification, Mr. Reed, about that, the, the Phase 1 is just the soccer facility itself. They work out of Oakland High School. That's not a high-capacity facility. There's all kinds of limitations on even what you can do inside the building. The, the second phase is where the outdoor fields are added, as well as where in the, the parking lots expanded. So that was where we felt like whenever the application would come in for site plan for those fields to be constructed and for that parking lot to be expanded, in conjunction with that request, would be the catalyst for the turn lane to be, to be constructed. What we're running into with Mr. Lopez is that, again, his primary goal is to have the indoor facility constructed. What we're running into is that, because it has to be sprinkled, and just the overall upfront cost for having that building constructed, that to, to do the construction costs related to the turn lanes, he would have to know that that business is really growing enough for those fields are even merited. Those fields may never happen. They are on the master plan. That is the vision for the property, but until those fields happen, the capacity on the, on the overall project is, is fairly low, because it's only what can happen. the, on the overall project is fairly low, because it's only what can happen inside that building itself. We do know when those fields are constructed, that, that opens up, that opens up the possibility for, for the club to have more youth sports, you know, where the kids could, there'd just be a lot more people at that time. So that's why we asked that they could be put into Phase Two, because they, they wouldn't be operating randomly, but they would be in conjunction with the expansion of the overall capacity of the site, basically the build-out of the master plan. That's the logic, at least.
Other questions? Commissioner Key.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me say that this is in my district, and I am not against this project. I've met with Clyde, Jorge, and I know that these will be good neighbors. I'm excited to have a park, to have a family, family activity area. They currently work out of Oakland, and it's a, a well-thought-of club, and it's, it's maintained very well. However, I'm not in opposition to the suggestions that were made. If protocol stands that it needs to go before Planning Committee, then I, I can't stand in the way of that, and I think that process should be taken. So I would make a motion that it, it goes before Planning Commission. Committee.
And I, we'll...
We're not ready for that motion yet.
When that would happen.
Yeah, wait.
Mr. Key, we're more than willing, I just, it would just be up to Mr. Bruce. I mean, we're, if that's what it's going to take for us to before, there's no question. We want to go back through Planning Commission and Mr. Lopez. We'd have to come to agreement on that as well. But if that's what, if we need to do that, and Mr. Phillips, I don't want to offend you, trust me, I felt like it was definitive enough of what we had to accomplish in order to move through, because those are really clear objections, that if we got those things done, we felt like we could move forward. But if, if we need to go back to Planning Commission, we more than willing, we will.
Commissioner Key.
Well, let me make a point. I mean, you've asked for hoops to be jumped through. I've, I've not met somebody more willing to jump through hoops. Dollar spent, hoops jumped through. How can we have good neighbors? We're looking at our constituents. We're looking at potential opportunities to come into the area. So we, we need to be careful about what we ask for. If we ask for something and we get it, then it's, the onus is upon us to approve. If we ask for things and we don't get it like we want it, well, then we should deny. It's a procedure. Thank you.
Just one quick follow-up. Clyde, I apologize to you. I've learned a lot up here in the last 30 years, and one of them is try to keep my emotions to myself, and I probably got a little emotional, and I apologize for that. But I do feel like the process has been bypassed, and I feel like it's an end run. I've never, but one time, in my 30 years up here, voted against the recommendation of the commissioner. And I'm kind of glad for those comments, but I would, as a planning commissioner, I would be open to reconsider in a more positive frame of mind if this was brought back before the Planning Commission. But I will go ahead and commit that I will not support it without the Planning Commission's recommendation.
Commissioner Srento. Thank you, Commissioner. Other questions for the presenter? We're, we're still in our public hearing. Mr. P.
If this was pulled, can it go directly back to you, Doug? Okay, without having, usually there's a waiting period. If it's denied, there's a waiting period normally in there.
If the application's actually denied, then there is a waiting period of nine months. Yes, sir. Now, if it's basically, this is changed from the Planning Commission to the County Commission, we're not comfortable reviewing this, pushing it back down, that timeframe doesn't apply.
So...
So if, let me make sure for the record, we get this clear, if they withdraw, then the timeframe does not apply.
That's correct. We could bring it up at the next Planning Commission meeting, the next night meeting next month. That's when we would consider rezonings.
They recognize.
We would like to withdraw our application until, until we can get these things resolved and get some clarification on, before the Planning Commission again. We'd appreciate that opportunity.
That's correct. Oh, 30 days, next meeting.
I mean, they could come, the next meeting is the 27th, but that's where we do Plats and Plans. The next rezoning would be the 11th or whatever it is next month. I don't have the table.
What day would that be done?
Mr. Gerling.
Yes, I have a question. Mr. Demossi, based on what you just said, should there be a motion from Commissioner Key along the lines of what he said, indicated, taking it back to the Planning Commission in order to not invoke the delay time in there?
I, I don't necessarily think that's necessary, just because they're taking it off themselves voluntarily at this point, the applicant is. So I still don't think the timeframe would, would apply in that situation.
I agree. Commissioner, he's, he's voluntarily withdrawing the application, and then we'll go back to the Planning Commission at this point in time. I think that was a good move. Otherwise, it'd be nine months. So, any other questions? Commissioner.
I just had one thing I wanted to add, and that is Clyde has been really patient with us as a planning commissioner, as he's worked on this particular project, and I completely agree with Commissioner Key. It excites me, the thought of having a recreational facility in that space, having that green space. The county doesn't have a parks department, and so I do think that would be an advantage. The biggest hesitation that I believe any of the planning commissioners have is that when you, when we approve a PUD, the pattern book is what you're held to. And so if there's missing language in the pattern book tonight and we approve it, then we missed our opportunity, and, and you got it in as-is. So that's the reason that I feel like Commissioner Phillips and others, and Commissioner Reed probably feel like this is just premature, because you've not worked out the language, and it's not been hashed out in the way that it needs to be for the pattern book itself. So, but I don't think anybody's fussing at you. I just think it's just a little premature.
Any other questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Then we will come back out of recess. Mr. Demossi.
I believe we're ready to move on to our third public hearing of the night, which would be for a property located along Lebanon Pike, 4781 Lebanon Pike. Existing zoning is residential medium density. RM proposed zoning as a planned unit development for a residential subdivision. The property that's the subject of this rezoning request was actually considered by the Planning Commission a little earlier this year. The original request was for 180 townhome units on the property. Staff and the Planning Commission did have several concerns, which did include density, ingress and egress to the property, and also the amount of resident and/or visitor parking. After much discussion, that particular plan was recommended for denial by the Planning Commission back in April of this year. That plan did not come forward for your consideration. Since that time, the applicant reevaluated their plans, and now proposing to construct 137 single-family detached units on the subject property. So these are no longer townhomes. These are single-family detached units. There is a breakdown of the two different lot types that are proposed in the chart that I have on the staff comments there. There's also a copy of the pattern book that is included on your iPads for your review as well, so I won't go into a whole lot of the detail as far as that goes. Of course, I'm always available for questions. Units will be constructed with vinyl hardie board and stone-water table materials. You can look in the pattern book for more renderings and things. The development will access Lebanon Pike, 231. All streets constructed will be public rights of way. You see on the concept plan that there is a proposed stub street to the west and to an adjacent Murphysboro City development that's planned for that property. There's also two connections planned to the north. We have had conversations about potential developments on both of those properties to the north. Actually, we're looking at a planned development application right now for the one on the corner of Central Valley Road and 231 Lebanon Pike, although it's not ready to come before the Planning Commission yet. That is something that we are looking at. So, but the ultimate timing of those connections is not known. The traffic study submitted by the applicant does indicate that despite the decrease in the number of units, turn lanes into the development from Lebanon Pike are still warranted. Those are shown. There was quite a bit of discussion during the original meetings that we had on this earlier this year, and then the one we had last month regarding the make-out, makeup of the turn lane, as far as is there enough room to do what they're trying to do. It's kind of a little pinch point there between where the river comes over and the topography of the area, an adjacent small cemetery on a neighboring property, which could cause some site distance issues. The applicant has worked that out, where the site distance appears to be adequate, and the applicant appears to be able to put that turn lane into that space that is there. So that site triangle appears to be adequate. There was also some timing from the Planning Commission regarding the development of those northern tracks. We talked about that just a moment ago, the phasing of that development. It's kind of unknown at this point, although we know that both of those properties are moving forward to some extent. Ultimately, what those connections to the north on this property would provide is the ability to have access not only to 231, but also to Central Valley Road and the eventual signalization of that intersection. So we did like the fact that they are providing those northern connections. After other discussion from the Planning Commission, they did recommend approval of this application by a unanimous vote. So again, I'm here with, answering any questions, and the applicant is also present.
Any questions?
I just want to be sure I look at this. I have looked over the plans and have spoken to Mr. Lamb, and, and there's been quite a few changes on this particular thing, which, which is good. I'm still just a hair concerned about where are we at any flooding? Is it like in a 100-year flood plan or anything like that?
I don't recall the property being in a 100-year flood plan. Now, drainage is something, of course, that we look at with, with any application. Of course, let's go back through my, yeah, there's not any 100-year flood plan on the property. There's a high point on the property, and then there's some, of course, low areas and everything that they'll have to plan around and engineer around. But those are things that would be taken care of during the preliminary plan, construction drawing phase, but no 100-year flood plan on the property.
Okay, I just want to relieve anybody's concern on that part.
Other questions from the commission? For Director Demossi? Seeing none, then I'll call the Rutherford County Commission meeting into recess to hold our public hearing on this request. Our public hearing is now in session. Is there anyone desiring to speak for or against? If you would, please come forward, state your name and your address, and if you're for or against.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Grant Sharing, and I'm with PVE. The address is 1475 Columbia Avenue. Doug always does a very thorough review, so I'm not going to hit into anything else. Just simply noting that we are here. If there are any additional questions, we can answer them. So thank you for your time and your consideration.
And are you for or against?
For.
Just for the record. Is there anyone else wanting to speak at this point? Seeing no one come forward, I declare the public hearing closed. Rutherford County Board of Commissioners back into session. Mr. Demossi. Are you good? Okay, thank you so much.
Mayor.
Yes. Mr. P.
Could I ask Doug a question?
Yeah.
Just flipping pages on these maps, and I noticed there's an easement for utilities, then another 75-foot-wide utility easement. I don't know, is that overhead wiring or?
I believe it's the, let me open that up, Mr. P. Just give me just a second.
One of them is over, existing overhead utilities. I just wanted to make sure we weren't.
Let me see what page you're looking at.
Commissioner P is talking about the, there is a TVA easement that runs through the property. They're aware of that, and they're planning around that. There's also some easements that run through the property, some force mains that run through that, serving Walter Hill School, and actually even on the frontage there, force main from the landfill that goes back to the sewer treatment plant, but they're aware of all those and are planning around those.
Any other questions? Commissioner Gammon.
This is in my district, and with all the information review and the answer I got from Mr. Demossi, and it did clear committee, I'm going to move for its acceptance.
With staff comments. I have a motion and a second.
No, it's, it's not. It's Commissioner Gammon's.
Commissioner Gammon's district. Okay. Commissioner P.
My concern was, I used to be on planning myself and used to build, and so I read plans, and just looking at that TVA easement through there, Doug just assured me that there's no houses under that TVA easement. Is that where the roadway comes through, the future road connection, or where, where's that at? Because it looks like there's houses solid through there, except for that one opening. Is that where the easement's going, or you changed plans?
Let me, let me pull it up on my iPad here. Essentially, where that break is between Phase One and Phase Two, sorry, I'm just trying to pull up my mind.
Wait a minute. We're, we're not in public hearing.
I don't have it.
Mr. Demossi, you want to step back there?
I've got it all here.
Commissioner Dodd.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just in the interim, while they're looking at the plans, I do want to caution this commission tonight that we're not looking at the construction plans. We're looking at the rezoning process, so don't let some of the details of construction get in the way of approving the motion and the second by the chairman of the Planning Commission. Mike Hughes will definitely look at easements, flooding, drainage. He's become very proficient with that, so just keep in mind that those issues will be looked at later.
And the applicant, again, he is aware of those easements, so, but yeah, that, from what we've looked at, they know to stay out of those, and this plan reflects that. We've been, we've been looking at this for quite some time.
So I have a motion from Commissioner Gammon, second by Commissioner Phillips. Any further objection, questions? Commissioner P.
I just wanted to make sure Commissioner Gammon understands I'm not trying to shoot anything down. I just want to make sure that they're following their plans, and you know, it's not legal to build a permanent structure underneath overhead power lines there. And just from looking at these plans, it looks like they were off some. He's showing me where it's possible that these are good, and they'll review them. Anyway, the reason I'm asking to speak again is to let you know that I plan to support the commissioner and his district, so thank you.
And, and just for a little peace of mind, obviously, if this is approved, it's going to come back through the planning process for preliminary plan, master plan review, construction drawings, final plat. We're going to verify all that, just to make sure, but yeah, we know that what they're showing is accurate.
Other questions on the motion? Mr. Pierce.
The land to the north, does it belong to the same people, or does it belong to?
It's a, this would be a different applicant, different owner.
Thank you.
Other questions on the motion? Seeing none? All those in favor seeing five, seeing aye? All opposed? Motion carries. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to, just kind of touch base with the County Commission just briefly about the, just updating you on the process for the comprehensive plan, long-range transportation plan update. Michael Skipper with GNRC has done most of the interviews, and I know a lot of you did the surveys. He'd like to schedule a joint meeting between the County Commission and the Planning Commission to discuss the findings of that particular process that he's undertaken to this point. Of course, yeah, as we all know, the big reason we're looking to do this, it's been about 10 years since we've last updated our plan. We know there's been a lot of growth in Rutherford County. Recent census numbers that have been released show the population of April, as of April 1st, 2020, for Rutherford County to be 341,486. You compare that to what it was back in 2010, which was just a little over 200.
You compare that to what it was back in 2010, which was just a little over 262,600, you can see that the amount of growth that we've had here, that's over 30% growth in just 10 years, that's pretty astonishing. So we know that there's a lot of challenges that we have, and that's the big reason why we're embarking on this process. Of course, we also want to have buy-in from both the planning commission and the county commission on this, so I think it's really important that we look at doing this joint meeting, just so we can have a meeting of the minds, so to speak, and to kind of go over the findings that Michael has got so far. Essentially, they'd like to do some welcome remarks, some introductions, of course, highlighting the trends and forecasts, some of the things I've just talked about, especially using the updated census data, the findings from the leadership survey and the interviews, kind of going over the scope of work and community engagement strategy that they'd like to do, and then talk about next steps and immediate actions. We're looking, we were originally looking at timeframe the last week of September. There were some time conflicts there. We just wanted to kind of poll the county commission on this to kind of see what might work for you. Michael would like to be able to do two meetings, kind of just because of the size of the group. However, the planning commission seemed to prefer one meeting. Michael Skipper is okay with that. He said there'd probably be the ability to do like breakout sessions, maybe use room 205, have a group in here, so he thinks he can make that work. Looking at some possible dates, they were looking at, you know, different times of day as well, looking at possibility of the morning of, just, I'm sorry, October the 5th, or possibly early afternoon or evening on the 12th of October. I believe the 12th of October, I believe those both days are Tuesdays. I just kind of want to throw it out to the county commission to kind of see what your preferences would be, so I can report back to Michael. Of course, a meeting with this many elected and appointed officials would have to be advertised, so we'd have to take precautions to do that, which we would do, but I just kind of wanted to throw it out there to the commission to see what your preference would be.
Do you need to know that tonight, Mr. Demossi, or could I have Rachel poll everybody tomorrow on those dates and let everybody kind of pick one?
That might be a better option than trying to figure out.
So I'll have Rachel send something out to you electronically, and you can check your dates and check with your wife or spouse or whatever, and see if that's okay. Ball break.
The week of that, the 5th, the 5th would be the, yeah, that week, that first week. Yeah, that's probably not going to work, yeah. So look at maybe the 12th then as a possibility.
Well, we'll do that tomorrow, Mr. Demossi. I'll get Rachel send out those dates, and you may want to check with Mr. Skipper also and see if there's maybe one other date. We have a choice of three that we could pick from. We do that. I was at RTA meeting yesterday, which I serve on that board in GNRC with Mr. Skipper yesterday. There's some exciting things happening. We got a report from, on the Amtrak that is proposed to come from, start in Nashville, stop here, Tallahassee, Chattanooga, and Atlanta, two trips a day, back and forth to Nashville. So it's kind of exciting things that's coming our way. The interloop plan of downtown Nashville and everything is connected to Nashville, going out, going to Sumner, going to Montgomery, coming to Rutherford, and the south route as well. So they're looking at train, they're looking at everything, so it's a good opportunity for everyone to attend. Thank you. Commissioner Cook?
I would like to encourage our planning commission and our codes and zoning and so forth to watch the building that's coming into the county, because when they start cutting hills down, that changes their flood area. I know they've cut the hill down just above me, and I'm in flood area now. They even hadn't, they hadn't designated, but when water stands on your street, but six and eight inches, you're in a flood area.
Yes, ma'am.
And I would like for them to watch their building, because we've got 1,500 houses going in Laverne, and it's going, down that hill, it's going to be bad.
Thank you for those comments. Commissioner Phillips?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We, we've learned a lot over the last 10 years. We've had a lot of planned unit developments go in. We've learned good and the bad from those things. There's a real need to update our comprehensive plan. We need to look at adding certain things to our plan, such as infrastructure around those developments and the needs that we're not addressing right now. So this is a real important time for us going forward. So this comprehensive plan is extremely important, that we're all on board with what this is going to accomplish for us in the foreseeable future. Not only what we've learned, but trying to look ahead as to where we want certain things to be in the future. And it's going to be real important that we're all on board and kind of have a real consensus as to the direction we want to go in. So, and it's going to take a little time to put this together. It can't be done in just a matter of a few days. So I would appreciate everyone paying attention to what the comprehensive plan is, but also what it could be as we go forward. This new comprehensive plan will include things that we've learned that hasn't worked out real well, and we'll also take a look at where things should be, maybe in the future, and better protect green spaces and other types of things as we go forward. All of you have heard complaints, and I know there's been a lot of them over the last few years, such as infrastructure complaints, and that's something that we have to address. And hopefully, the comprehensive plan will be able to take into consideration future development in areas that maybe doesn't have the infrastructure to support certain things. So it's important that we're all on board and reach a consensus on this. It's an important time for Rutherford County.
Thank you, Chairman Protem. Those are words taken to heart, very important words. I always believe that we're better together, and if everyone can attend that meeting with GNRC, we're all working together, and we'll have a better idea of where we're headed in the future. Anything else? If not, we'll move on into, back to item 13, which is our standing committee officer election. I'm going to call on Chairman Protem. Commissioner Kush?
Well, I was going to make a motion, and Nick may roll his eyes and say that's illegal, which wouldn't be the first time I've stood up and he's given me that look, and I will make this motion and it may die with a lack of second, which also wouldn't be the first time I've done that. But after reviewing this 21 and 22 standing committees, they look very similar to what we've been doing the last year, as well as the chairmans and vice chairmans. So I'm going to make a motion, we dispense with the election, and make a motion that we keep the current chair and vice chair, as well as the calendar dates and times that are listed in this 2021-22 committee roster. That would be my motion.
There is a motion?
Yes.
And we have a second. I've got advice from legal counsel that it's our call.
Just to caveat on that.
Technically, we probably should come to the well and do it in all transparency, but we are being filmed, and so the motion is up to the commission to make that decision. And I have a motion and a second. Now discussion. I see no discussion. I would like for us to be on the board on this. Members, your vote? We're on the board.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
19, yes.
All right, you did something that wasn't illegal, that. Thank you, Commissioner. I saved us a little bit of time, a whole lot of time, matter of fact, I might be able to go eat a little bit early, so, all right. Next is our resolution to approve our consent agenda.
Before we start that.
Oh, Commissioner.
We have a new, new committee, I mean, a date for the purchasing committee on this standing, or number here. We have never had a, we've never had a date, standing date for purchasing.
Never had a date specific for purchasing?
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to bring that to attention.
Okay. Thank you. We now have a date specific for purchasing committee, and Rachel will make sure that everyone gets that on your calendar.
We don't hear a petition on the chief at that standing.
Yeah, it's legal too. That is correct. I'd like to call on Chairman Protem Phillips, if you will, for our resolution to approve our consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have had a request to pull item H8, the recommended expenditures for the governor's direct appropriation grant from the consent agenda, and that's been pulled and will be considered under, with a budget presentation. Anyone else have an item that they would like to remove? Commissioner Stevens?
Commissioner Stevens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would request that we take item 5 off about the FEMA hazard mitigation grant.
Item 5 has been withdrawn and will be considered under the budget. Correct?
Yes, that's correct. And I do have a question about the telecom audit. Did we find out if that has to be put out for bid, or if we can do that without bidding it out?
Commissioner Stevens, I'm still looking at that. I got that request today, but I think the way that Mr. Tucker has framed the resolution is that if you approve it, subject to me looking at that question, and if the answer is no, it doesn't have to be bid, then the agreement can be entered into. If it turns out the answer is it does have to be bid, then your approval is void, and we'd have to bid it.
Item 8 and item 5 have been withdrawn. Anyone else have an item that they would like to consider to be withdrawn?
So items 5 and 8 have been bumped from consent?
I've reviewed the consent agenda, with the exception of the two items that have been withdrawn, find them to be appropriate for the consent agenda, and move that the consent agenda be adopted, with the exception of items 6, I'm sorry, items 5 and item 8.
I have a motion, a second from Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner P? Any questions? Our discussion? All those in favor? Seeing five, seeing aye?
On the board.
Members, I guess there's some money in there. Probably need to do that. Members, if you would, please cast your vote. We're on the board.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
19, yes.
Motion passes. We have no one finished business at this time? Next, we move into our standing committees. Commissioner P, our first budget, finance, and investment committee? You're recognized.
We'll try to keep this as brief as possible and still get everything covered. First item is item K1A, which are some budget resolutions to make some adjustments. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows for county buildings, decrease in unassigned fund balance of $393,210, and an increase expenditures for building improvements for the same amount. And this is repair for the Lane Agri Park building where we had that unfortunate accident of somebody not knowing how to drive, or knowing how to drive and going through our building. This money will be reimbursed by our insurance minus our deductible. Unfortunately, our deductible is $100,000. So I'll continue here. The next is additional, request for additional maintenance tech position from Mr. Mannken, and this is due to one of his employees being out on long-term FEMA and another person that's on light duty, and they'll be picking up some needed software work, among other things, for this money. Anyway, there'll be a decrease in unassigned fund balance of $51,121, an increase expenditures of maintenance personnel for $35,100, social security $2,176, pension $3,570, employee and dependent insurance of $9,700, debility insurance of $65, and employee Medicare $510. Next item is a sex offender registry. This was actually inadvertently left out during our, last June when we set our budget. Anyway, there'll be a decrease from unassigned fund balance $4,000, and a increase expenditures to other charges of $4,000, and this is to pay for the TBI fees for the sex offender registry. Revolve this 16th day of September 2021. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion, we have a second. Commissioner Dodd? Questions?
I do have a question. Chairman P, if you would, please enlighten me regarding the accident or incident at Lane Agri Park. So a citizen's vehicle damaged the building. The damage is the sum of almost $400,000?
The accident we're talking about, this car vehicle actually drove through the main doors of the building and went through the hallway into one of the classrooms and out the exterior walls, rear of the building, so.
Okay. So, all right, so our insurance is going to cover everything above their $100,000 deductible, I think is what I understood you say, right?
That's my understanding.
That's correct.
My question is, why are we even out the $100,000? Is the other one uninsured? Is the driver uninsured?
We are subrogating, our claims company is subrogating back against them.
Okay. So for the time being, we're out $100,000. We're trying to reclaim.
Whatever we recoup during that subrogation, back against them, then we'll come back into the general fund.
Mr. Gurley? Yeah, as chairman of the advisory committee, I went over there the day it happened, and several others did too. I think Commissioner Reed was over there, and several others. This was, I believe, to be an intentional act, probably. It's yet to be determined, I think, but it did extensive damage. The vehicle literally went through the front doors, which by the way are on back order and won't be delivered until November, and threw the first wall into the meeting room, and then threw another wall and out the back. It took out IT stuff, it took out a lot of stuff. It damaged a lot of pipes, it caused flooding, electrical shortage, so this is extensive damage to this building. It's just beginning to see the light at the end of the tunnel.
I was quite impressed with that Tacoma truck. It made it all the way through. But a lot of the damage came from the sprinkler suppression system. They hit the pump that was in the kitchen, so that flooded the hole where we leased space to the federal government over on the left-hand wing is where it was all flooded. So that waked up the sheet rock and all the carpet and mold. We had to abate the mold, et cetera, so it was a major accident. Other questions? All right, we have a motion, and we have a second. Have a second. All those in favor? Spending money. Back on the board, members, we are on the board tonight, so please cast your vote. your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Madam Clerk, record the vote.
Seventeen, yes.
Motion carries. Chairman?
Item K1B, resolution be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Educational Capital Projects Fund be amended according to the schedules attached heretofore as Exhibit One and Exhibit Two and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, resolved this 16th day of September 2021. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Got a motion. Is there a second? Second?
Mr. Chairman, just to mention, of course, this is on your paperwork there, but the two projects they're talking about first is a turn lane that's vitally needed over at the Wilson Elementary School. That's $68,000. And then also, the other are the capital project funds that were left over and unspent from last year, that they're wanting to recognize them to go ahead and finish those projects. And it's something we've already approved.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? Commissioner Kush?
Is the highway department self-performing that construction? Or are we bidding that out?
I'd have to refer to the school board or maybe the chairman.
Okay. The only reason I say that...
You're saying you're bidding that out?
We are.
It's being bid out.
The price seems extremely favorable to us, so I thought maybe that's something we were self-performing.
I'll agree, because that's going to have to be a long turn lane there if you've ever been over in that area. And I've been told that it is. It goes all the way back up to cut off road, I guess it is.
Okay. Any further discussion? We'll be on the board, members. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Madam Clerk, record the vote.
Nineteen, yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, this next item is actually something that we had approved of last year, and they are coming back for a change. Now, there's about eight pages here. I don't think any of us want to listen to me drone through those eight pages, but there's a couple. The first two, a lot of those pages I'll have to read. However, when we get to Section One, Section Two, Section Three, Section Four, and Section Five and Six, Seven, I'm going to depend on you to look at those yourselves. They're on your boards in front of you. This is a resolution of Rutherford County regarding amendment to the Economic Impact Plan for the East College Street Historical Development Area. Whereas the Industrial Bond Development Board of Rutherford County, Tennessee, the IDB adopted a resolution approving an economic development plan on August 28, 2019, to induce one East College LLC company to undertake a parking garage in the development plan for, for the planned area. And whereas the City Council of Murfreesboro, the city, approved and set economic development plan on September the 11th, 2019, and October 24th, 2019. And whereas the Rutherford County Commissioners Commission approved said economic development plan on October 17th, 2019. And whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has necessitated certain changes to the development and affected the development schedule. And whereas the IDB adopted a resolution approving the amendment and restarted the Economic Impact Plan on June 30th, 2021. And whereas the IDB is a public nonprofit corporation organized and existing under and by virtue of the provisions of Chapter 53, Title VII Tennessee Code Annotated, as amended the Act. And whereas the Murfreesboro City Council adopted a resolution approving the amendment and restated economic plan on August 11th, 2021. And whereas the purpose of said Act as stated therein is to be, being to authorize the incorporation of the several municipalities in the state of Tennessee of public corporations to finance, acquire, construct, own, lease, equip, and/or dispose of properties to the end that such corporations may be able to, among other things, maintain and increase employment opportunities by promoting industry, trade, commerce, tourism, and recreation by including manufacturing, industrial, governmental, educational, financial services, commercial, and recreational experiences to locate and to remain in the state of Tennessee. And whereas the resolution by the IDB adopted on June 30th, 2021, approved by an amended and restated economic impact plan for the East College Street Historical Development Area and the plan attached heretofore as Exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference in order to increase the company to undertake a revised development, which will include commercial office, retail, restaurant, and residential uses, together with a privately owned parking garage facility that will serve both the users of the development and the public, which Garage Project is anticipated to be composed of a eight-story garage, providing approximately 490 parking spaces with another 56 on-street parking spaces, for a total of 546 parking spaces being provided by the development, the Garage Project. And whereas the Garage Project is an eligible project within the meaning of TCA 7-53-10115 Amendment A. And whereas the IDB is authorized by the Act to, among other things, prepare and submit to the city and to the Board of Commissioners of Rutherford County, Tennessee, for their approval, an economic impact plan pursuant to Section 312 of the Act. And whereas the IDB held a public hearing relating to the plan and approved the plan pursuant to which the IDB would receive certain property taxes allocated to the IDB pursuant to Section 312 Amendment H and the Act, the available increment, and use the same as an incentive, incentive to the company by using the available increment either to, one, pay or reimburse the company for paying a portion of the eligible cost, such term and all other terms, the initial letter of which are capitalized and is not otherwise defined herein, shall have the meaning ascribed thereto in the plan of the Garage Project, or to, I, provide financial assistance to fund a portion of the eligible cost of the Garage Project by borrowing money under a non-recourse note and providing the proceeds thereof of the company to reimburse it for the eligible cost of the Garage Project. Whereas the IDB is authorized by law and is deemed it necessary to provide the incentive pursuant to the terms of a certain amended and restated funding agreement, the funding agreement, to be entered into with the company. And whereas Rutherford County has been asked to approve the plan to the incentive to the company. And now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Rutherford County, Tennessee, as follows, and this is the sections I spoke of. Section One refers to finding with respect to the Garage Project. Section Two, approval of the plan. Section Three, miscellaneous acts. Section Four, limited obligation and liability. Section Five, or captions. Section Six, partial invadibility. And Section Seven, the resolution shall be effective immediately, the public welfare and the welfare of the county requiring it, approved and adopted by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners on the 16th day of September 2021. And I also want to add, if you'll look on page four of the amendment, and you should have that there in front of you, Section Seven, the maximum amount, the aggregate amount of the TIF incentive for all initial expenses, administrative expenses, and eligible costs will not in any exceed $9 million. The TIF is the maximum amount. Resolved this 16th day of September. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion. Second?
Mr. Chairman, I make, I second the motion. And FYI for the other members, this came out of budget with unanimous recommendation.
I have a motion and a second. Commissioner McAdoo?
Also, it went from property management with a presentation from the group, and they were in detail about it, and we send it to budget with a unanimous recommendation.
Heard the comments. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? We'll be on the board, members. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Madam Clerk, record the vote.
Nineteen, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, our next item is K1D. Before we start on that, I want to make a quick observation. We've got a subcommittee, Mr. Kush, I know Mr. Dodd are both on that, where we've been looking for alternatives to property taxes as far as being able to raise revenues for building our schools, our roads, all the costs that we have. Anyway, this item was brought to us the other day, brought to our attention by Ms. Crowell, and I want to thank her for that. And basically, our emissions testing for Rutherford County will be ending the first of next year, so we'll no longer have to pay the $9 fee. Part of that $9 fee was $1. It used to be, when it was $10, we got 25 cents. Went to $9. Somewhere in there, we gained a dollar. But basically, in February of next year, when this actually requirement ends, then we will lose that $1 amount of money that we get per vehicle for processing that and clerk's fees. So just kind of give you the background of where we're going with this. Budget looked at this the other night and in the light of needing to find other avenues to raise funds for schools, roads, ambulance, you name it, we decided to go this route. And legislation actually allows us to charge up to $4 per vehicle for registration fees, which, when not used by Ms. Crowell's department, would revert to the county's budget. Therefore, let me read this resolution. Whereas vehicle emission testing will cease in Rutherford County on January the 14th, 2022, whereas the county clerk currently receives $1 from each vehicle emission test, which will be lost when the vehicle emission testing ceases. Whereas Tennessee Code Annotated 55-4-104, Section F, provides the county, the governing body for the ability to increase the county clerk's fee imposed on vehicle registration by amount up to $4 if vehicle emission testing ceases. Therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county clerk vehicle registration fee be increased by $4 in accordance with the provisions of Tennessee Code Annotated 55-4-104F and distributed in accordance therein therewith, effective February 1st, 2022, resolved this 16th day of September 2021. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion. Have a second. Commissioner Kush, discussion? Press your key.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I, as anyone else, hate to see any rates go up that I have to pay. So we're seeing that we have been getting $1, but now we're going to ask for $4. Has Budget determined where this money's going to be spent and how it's earmarked?
It will go to the general fund, and then from there, you as commission will decide where that money will be spent from the general fund. We, you know, of course, we'll go through the budget process, you know, starting early next year, but the money will be determined by the 21 ladies and gentlemen seated around you.
In the estimated money, Mr. Chairman, estimated revenue on the 1 million, so it's about a penny on the tax rate. That's what it would equal. Commissioner Kush?
I don't want to do anything to hurt the senior citizens or the handicap, but I paid for my handicap sticker. But my friend, when he went in, he didn't have to pay for his. So there's an avenue there. We need to check on, because it takes money to make those cards that we would have in the car.
Well, one thing I want to point out along these lines is, and you're fixing to see a couple more fees here, is we're not out to gouge anybody. We are trying to pay our bills. We're actually operating at a deficit right now. And, you know, we're pulling down our fund balance just to balance, and I'm not sure the exact amount. And I see the nods in the background here. So we're not asking for money that, just because we want to go out and build fancy new projects. We're trying to keep our head above water building these schools and improving these highways and things like that.
Commissioner Rother?
I'm going to take my mask off and commissioner hat off. I'm just a citizen, and I spend $10, $12, however it is.
Nine.
Nine?
Per vehicle.
Own three vehicles in my house. So I spend $9. And they're newer vehicles. But because of a gas cap that's screwed up, I fail, then I have to leave, go buy a new gas cap at Autozone, drive all the way back, sit in line for an hour to go through and get passed, and then have to go get my tax notes. So I spend a lot more than $9 if my gas cap is screwed up. But I spend that much in time waiting and waiting and waiting. So I spend more than $9, and so that's going away. And now the clerk says, we just want four of your dollars. I'll give you five.
Or back to nine, right?
Commissioner, it was worth $10 for me to not have to sit in that line.
Other comments? I have a motion and a second. We're on the board, members.
I was just going to say, if he wouldn't wait to the last minute to do all that, it wouldn't take as long in the line.
Yeah, agreed. All right, members. We're on the board. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
Nineteen, yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Next item is K1E, and as I mentioned, we'll be looking at some fees on these next couple. And I'll read this resolution. Whereas planning and engineering fees have not been increased in approximately 10 years. And whereas upon review of the fees, adjustments are recommended to cover the cost of staff to review plans and Platts. And whereas construction plans reviews have never been charged a review fee. And whereas the planning and engineering department has developed a project fee computation worksheet for construction plan review and land disturbance fees, which is on a sliding scale based on project acreage. Therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the planning and engineering fees be increased in accordance with the schedule of planning and engineering fees and the project fee computation worksheet, a copy attached heretofore as Exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, effective November 1st, 2021, resolved this 16th day of September 2021. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Have a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll be on the board, members. Please cast your vote. Seeing none, we'll be on the board, members. Please cast your vote. Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now. Nineteen, I mean eighteen yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, next item is item K1F, and this is also a slight increase in some fees. Whereas the solid waste electronic recycling fees at the Haley Road Collection Center are currently imposed at 25 cents per pound and are recommended to increase to 33 cents per pound to cover the recycling cost paid to the vendor. And whereas only cash and checks are currently accepted for electronic recycling fees. And whereas the county trustee has been able to implement a debit credit card processing procedure for the Haley Road Collection Center to eliminate some cash transactions. Whereas a debit credit card processing fee is recommended to begin at $2 per debit credit card transaction and increase in accordance with the schedule attached as Exhibit A. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the solid waste electronic recycling fee at the Haley Road Collection Center be increased to 33 cents per pound and a debit credit card processing fee be imposed per debit credit card transaction in accordance with the fee schedule. A copy attached hereto is Exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, effective November 1st, 2021, resolved the 16th day of September, 2021. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion and a second. Commissioner Piercey, any further discussion?
I have a question. This doesn't totally make sense to me. But I understand we need to increase the fee to make it self-paying as far as what people bring there and so on. But this credit card processing fee, it would seem to me that, you know, if I go to a business, I don't know that they charge me on the basis of how much I spend. There may be a fee incorporated into that for processing. I mean, if you do PayPal, there's a fee. But this seems to be getting to the point of discouraging people from bringing a lot of stuff there at any given time or anything. Does it actually cost more based on if I bring five TVs there versus, and pay with a credit card versus one TV? Doesn't it cost the same to process that?
Commissioner, you'd only be charged once, the $2 fee one time. You'd be charged, by the way, if you had one TV that was 10 pounds, that'd be $3.30 plus $2 for the fee, that'd be $5.30. If you had 20 pounds, it'd be, what, $6.60 and so on. But you'd only see the $2 fee one time. And that's pursuant with what we're doing in our other agencies. If you go down and use your credit card at leases to buy your tags, there's a fee to use a credit card there. There's a fee to pay your taxes here. I think it's seven here, isn't it, or something like that?
There's options.
Same company.
Schedule shows the fee increasing with the transaction amount.
The way it was explained to me, there's a flat $2 rate.
Now, where's it cost you $41 if you want to take in $1,900 and something dollars worth of transaction amount right there?
The convenience fees do increase as you're seeing that. But as I understood it, the majority of, what did he say, about out of 700 transactions, it's mostly below $50. So the majority of the transactions that are coming in there are small.
Based on history?
Yeah, but most of those gigantic TVs that take up half a room are gone. So most of them are flat panel TVs now.
So what you're saying is based on usage history at the center, most of the transactions are $50 or less?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out, Commissioner. I miss that myself, so. But you've heard the proposal.
Mr. Key?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Chairman, so are there other collection centers that are going to follow the lead in this?
This is our only location for electronics.
Okay, so this is only one, and it's for electronics only. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Other questions? All right, members will be on the board. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Madam Clerk?
Nineteen yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. The last thing on the start of our agenda, we've got two more items that were pulled, is a presentation of State Form CT-0253 for the two new bond issues. Those of you that have been here for a while, seen this in the past, this is a form that we're required to show you that actually shows all the fees when we do a bond issue. But that's just for your information, and we don't need a motion on it, but it's there for your reading approval. Okay, next, and if y'all don't mind, since I've looked at this one already, let's look at item eight, which was pulled. And what this has to do is, I think all of you probably are aware by now that we had a catastrophic failure on our air unit. It's a Craigsville Works Center. And in order to take care of this, we've had some bids, and we're actually asking for emergency change. And we were looking for places to be able to pull this money. And we were able to do that with this Gov. 20 grant. And that's why item eight was pulled. That was the approval. So I'm going to go ahead and read this. But if you'll look on the second page, you probably got that on your iPad, it'll actually show that we've put a $200,000 addition to replace chillers in there. And I think we've got some bids that are under that. But I'll go ahead and read this, and if you have any questions, we'll sort this out. Whereas Rutherford County received the Governor's Direct Appropriation Grant for the state of Tennessee in July 2021 in the amount of $1,770,566. And whereas the county mayor has recommended expenditures from the grant funds from items that were removed from these various departments from 2021, '22 budget requests. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the attached list, a copy of the same being attached hereto as Exhibit One and incorporated therein by reference as if set forth at length verbatim, totaling $1,358,278, excuse me, are the only authorized expenditures from the Governor's Direct Appropriation Grant Funds, resolved the 16th day of September, 2021. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion. Is there a second? Have a second? Questions? We'll be on the board, members. Members, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Madam Clerk, record the vote.
Nineteen yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, now we're ready for item five, which was Hazard Mitigation Grant Award for flood properties and related general fund budget amendments. I'm going to go ahead and read the resolution. And Mr. Mike Hughes is here, in case y'all have some specific questions, because I promise I probably can answer them for you. Whereas Rutherford County applied for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program through the Federal Emergency Management Agency in November of 2019 to buy out property that has been impacted by flooding. And whereas four property sites were awarded for the program with total cost of $1,138,910 with a county match required of 12.5% or $142,336.75 and the remaining portion from federal and state funds. And whereas the county will demolish the homes and the property would not be able to be built upon again. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and all other required officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee be and are hereby authorized to execute a contract with the Federal Emergency Management Agency and the Tennessee Emergency Management Agency for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. And additionally, that the general fund be amended as follows to fund the county match portion of the grant. Increased expenditures, transfers to other funds, $142,364 and a decrease of restricted fund balance of $142,364, resolved the 16th day of September, 2021. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion. Is there a second? A second? Discussion? Any discussion? Mr. Stevens?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I asked that this be removed from the consent agenda because I just wanted everybody to understand that if you vote for this, you're voting to spend $142,000 of our taxpayer money here in Rutherford County on four properties that we can't use and can't do anything with. But you're also voting to spend a million more dollars of other sources of taxpayer money on these projects as well. And I asked that in our budget committee meeting about if we could deed these properties to the neighbors with restrictions on it. And it seems like from the email that was sent out earlier today that the county can or must put restrictions on this property, that it can only be used for certain things. But the email that was sent out does not say if we can deed the properties to the neighbors or if we have to actually keep the title to those. And that was going to be my question for the attorney.
I don't, I have to look into that. I have not had an opportunity. It's the first question I've heard on it, but I'm happy to report back to you.
Well, it references some kind of an addendum in the email, but I didn't see the addendum attached to it. And I didn't know if the addendum included language that said the county must retain title or we can give it away as long as the restrictions are attached to it. If restrictions are put on a piece of property and recorded, whoever ends up with the title takes it subject to those restrictions. So if the county must put these restrictions on, which it sounds like we must do, my question is, can we transfer the title to the neighbor so that they're responsible for maintaining and insuring this property? Or do we have to go out there and mow it and insure it forever? And I just don't think it's wise for us to buy properties that we can't use, that we have to maintain and insure forever if we had a chance to give those away.
Yeah, I sent out that email. I had dinner with Patrick Sheehan, who, night before last, in Nashville at a scouting function. I talked to him and told him the request of the commission wanted to know what could go on these pieces of property. And so that's what I sent out to you. And I don't know if Rachel sent that to you or not this afternoon. But what I sent out to all the members is what we can't do, and tells you what you can do with it. It's my understanding in general discussion is that we cannot transfer title. Once you purchase it, we have to maintain and we'll have to mow it unless we come to agreement with a neighbor or a neighborhood that wants to use it for a park or some type of subdivision, garden of some sort, but no structures are allowed on it. If that agreement, we would just say that you would have to mow it, et cetera. But we can get that in writing for you. But you have the four properties that were presented back in 19 that is before you tonight. Commissioner Harris?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and ask our engineer to come up here and explain to Mr. Stevens. Kind of, you did a pretty good part of it. But Mike Hughes, let him come up here and speak.
Motion to suspend rules. Is there a second? Have a second. All in favor, second to five, saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Mr. Engineer?
Thank you, thank you. Commissioners, we have researched this, and you can transfer the property, but only to the federal government, state government, or a organization that is, let's see, conservation purposes. If we transfer it to a conservation group, we still have to retain an easement on it, so it's essentially still under our purview. But we could transfer it to federal government, state government. We may lease it to neighbors. If they wanted to use it to cut hay, run cattle, anything like that, we could do that. But we have to perpetually maintain it.
All right, Commissioner Reed?
Mike, I think two of these properties I know about. And, you know, this started back in 19, I believe, is when we first did this and started, made this request. And then COVID come around and federal government, plus we had a change of president, and we kept waiting and waiting for this. I know these families in there. You're talking about the county involved in this. The county has been involved in those properties since 19. Because they've had to go in there, they've had to rescue families. Those families have still been trying to live in those houses. We've been dealing with our rescue. I see the Sheriff's Department sitting back here. They've had to go in there and rescue people. They've had to block roads. We've been looking after those properties for, since 19.
Yes, sir.
So we've been spending money on these properties already, and they haven't even been ours. So I know where these are. I know what you're talking about right there. And I think where these properties are right there, they'll probably be used for probably cutting hay and that sort of thing, because I know exactly where they are. And this would be something that could really help us, I think, in that direction.
Commissioner Gurley?
Yes, this one property is on in Nashville, the one that we looked at several years ago, three or four years ago, probably. On the corner there.
Yes, sir.
Yes. I got involved with that particular piece of property. It's in, the people living there thought it was in my district. They call me. It was in Commissioner Irvin's district, now Commissioner Key's district. But I went over and looked at it, and I'm the one that actually suggested to them that they submit for a mitigation grant. This particular parcel of land, property, should have never been built on. It was built, after we changed the planning codes, it got by some way or another, it got by planning. It should have never been built on. And it was built not back in the 60s and not back in the 70s, but well after our, I don't know how it got past everybody, but it did. And this is the most reasonable thing to get these people out from having to, they're being flooded every time. And you and I went out there, Mr. Brooks went out there with us. We looked at all kinds of alternatives. There's no other solution. And really and truly, I'll be quite honest, I thought these people had a very good lawsuit to include the county in addition to the builder at the time because it was approved through planning, and everybody knew that it flooded. And so I think it's the right thing to do. I think a lot of these parcels can be used by the neighborhood. There's a subdivision there. It's a lot. And it's only unusable when it floods. So the rest of the time, neighbors could use it, play ball on. You know, one of the things you brought up, Commissioner Allen, is we don't have our Parks and Recreation Department personally. We're not like Williamson County, where we have rec centers and parks. The municipalities within our county have extensive parks and recreation, but the county itself does not. And maybe it's time, you know, there's another parcel that was bought after the 2010 flood over on Florence. Maybe it's time to start thinking about developing some of these half-acre, one-acre parcels into into pocket parks for the neighborhoods. It would go over well, I think, and with minimal expense to the county. We're gonna have to mow it anyway, a few little improvements, and allow Conservation Board, as they approve projects, to put playgrounds, et cetera, on these things. So I think this is the right thing to do. And yes, we're gonna have to spend a hundred and something thousand dollars, but we're not having to spend the remainder of that, so it's a pretty good deal, in my opinion.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And just to follow up, that subdivision where the house you're talking about was developed in the 50s, and it sat vacant for 56 years. Somebody bought the lot for a song and built a house on it. And, but I know I can't go back in time and fix past issues, but we've implemented a new program that any old subdivision somebody wants to build on it, comes to our office, we look at it and make sure it doesn't need some kind of plan to make it work. And if it's an issue with a lot that floods and can't be fixed, we just don't allow building permit on it. Yes, sir.
Commissioner Rather?
Now that it is brought up, I have a question. If we do this, is there like a hold harmless or something where the owner now cannot come back against the county because something the county mayor may not have done two years ago or five years ago or whatever? It's brought up that, you know, some of these guys may have a lawsuit against us, or a good suit. So if we buy it, is there something that indemnifies the county and says, "You can't come after us, we just bought it, you got your money, go on"?
I'm not aware of that, but I would have to research that. But I believe that you give up all rights to the property. I don't know about... I mean, you could sue anybody for anything lawsuit-wise, but...
I understand. If you had to have an indemnification agreement or something, I just hate, you know... And I agree basically with everybody, but we're spending money, and I understand why we're doing it. I actually agree with doing it. I'd hate to spend taxpayer dollars and then find out six or eight months from now we're being sued for $1.500.
Commissioner, I think we can move forward and get with legal, and before we settle on that, we should have some agreement that they sign that they waive all rights, future rights, if they accept the check. That sounds common sense to me. Okay.
Mike, just remind me when the time comes to get with me on it.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any further questions for Mike? Thank you. All right. Thank you, Mike. We'll come back out of recess. Chairman?
I think we have a motion and a second on this now. The only thing I'd like to mention is, and we covered this earlier, the fees that were requested for planning, that will allow them to, a little more leeway to spend more time on some of these plans. So we are trying to take steps, and we don't continue doing this. Nobody wants to continue doing this. Nobody wants to build on a house that's gonna flood either.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll be on the board, members. Members, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Madam Clerk, record a vote.
Seventeen yes, one no.
Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Next, this brings us to Health and Education Committee, no report. Property Management Committee, no report. Public Safety Committee, no report. Public Works and Planning Commission Committee, no report. Steering Legislative Governmental Committee, Chairman Harris.
An item was initially brought before the steering committee upon recommendation of the H.R. department regarding numerous changes to our handbook. Since that time, H.R. has conducted additional research and consulted with other departments and believes additional changes are necessary to the handbook. H.R. believes it is much more efficient to present a fully updated employee handbook for approval that incorporates all changes. However, such updated employee handbook is not ready yet for presentation to the commission and will be brought back when ready. H.R. requests no action to be taken and for the handbook to be sent back to H.R. for further updates. I will report anything else on this next month. Any questions?
All right. Statements and announcements? Chairman P.
Last month, I announced that we were having a ham breakfast at Kitterell, and however, it was canceled, and I didn't get a chance to repeat that publicly. I called and talked to the president of their board, just about this month, and they've suspended doing them temporarily due to the COVID situation. When the infection rate drops, they'll be looking at doing these again. But for right now, and I've had a lot of questions about it, off until further notice.
Off until further notice. Other statements and announcements? Commissioner Cook?
Saturday is the big day. We're having the ham breakfast from 6:00 to 10:00.
At the Rescue Squad?
And at 9:00, the parade lines up, and I'll be in the parade another year.
All right.
So y'all come.
That's Frontier Days in Laverne?
Well, it was called Old Timers' Day, but I think they've changed the name, I'm not sure. I gave them some history the other day.
Here, Cook Day.
Yeah. Old Timers' Day. Come from... It's a kickoff from Hillbilly Day in Madison years ago.
Sure. Okay.
A lot of you don't know that.
Coming Saturday. Other statements and announcements? Mr. Rather?
Want to briefly acknowledge and applaud the county clerk and her staff. In the absence of Rick, everything seemed to have gone just really smooth, and you should be appalled for that.
Thank you.
Okay. Other statements and announcements? Commissioner Reed?
Commissioners, I hope all of you realize that beginning tomorrow begins Constitution Week, and I hope everybody has a constitution you carry with you all the time. At 3:00 tomorrow afternoon, out here in front of the courthouse, there will be a ringing of the bell, recognizing that this is the beginning of Constitution Week, recognized by the DAR. So everybody remember that, carry that. Oh, at Rockvale, we got a big activity going on. We're having a chainsaw carving festival. I don't know how many of you ever had that, but that's starting tomorrow, be Saturday and Sunday as well. They'll be carving some interesting things out there, so we've never done that either out there. So this is something quite festive, I guess is what you might want to call it. So come out and see these artists with their chainsaws. They carve even benches. I saw the other day they've carved a camel with a chainsaw. Out of, made a bench that looks like a camel. So come out and do that. And remember, September the 25th is the annual Iggleville Festival, where they close off the entire highway out there and take out the entire street. And beginning at 9:00 in the morning to 3:00 in the afternoon, Iggleville becomes a festival city. So come out and eat and enjoy yourself.
Thank you for that chainsaw festival. Maybe they can carve you out another Bigfoot that won't match the other side of the driveway, huh? That's interesting. I feel... Commissioner Gammon?
I'm sorry. I was just gonna say, I'm more... Commissioner Johnson gave me candy to take to David tomorrow, so I'll go by the hospital and see if I can't give him a little bit of sweetness. But, and then one other thing, if I'm not out of order, I just did want to ask one thing, and it's for the, you know, future or whatever, but do we have, and I may not have seen it put out by you, sir, Lisa or something, do we have any kind of indicator? I know you met with the comptroller's office. Any information that can be shared, you know, as far as the COVID money and stuff?
I attended another webinar this week, and it's gonna be every Friday now. Rutherford County and a lot of counties receive their money direct. And so I was listening in. These seminars are really for cities, municipalities that are having to go through the state. So it's... I'm just gonna tell you that first one was kind of interesting, it's out on there, but my takeaway is wait on final rule for anything.
Final rule should be coming this month.
September, that's what they said.
Like told us in September, you know, we know that we're getting the... We've already got half of the 64 million, but we still don't have the final rule on that at this point.
It's really interesting that, you know, during the seminar, the different municipalities were calling, or chatting in of the various things they can use. You know, can we do it for this, can we do it for that? And a lot of the takeaway, it's like, well, it depends. It's that we are...
It means probably in the next month, by the next minute, we'll have some information, maybe on...
Yes, sir.
I hope so.
Yeah, I hope so, because everybody's kind of operating. When the comptroller came here just a few weeks ago, and we had a meeting out at some attended, out at North Boulevard Church of Christ, he went through and told us we're operating kind of the, under the interim...
Interim final.
Final rule, but the final rule is forthcoming, and we should know that by, I say, October 1.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Lisa.
Okay. Commissioner Key?
So I want to give you an update and a report on our successful 9/11 Heroes event.
That was a great, great event.
It was great, and I thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your support, Commissioners, staff. We had a record turnout, according to Mayor McFarland on the plaza. He said it's the most people we've seen on the plaza ever. But we started with a great procession, a very solemn time for reflection, and we just appreciate everybody's input. We couldn't have done it without city-county participation. The heroes were honored, and if you ask them, they probably have sore hands for all the high fives that they gave. So it was a great success. Thank you again, and tune in next year, we're gonna do it again. All right. Thank you.
Well, in talking to some of the organizers, along with Commissioner Key, he's the one that was driving force here, but they brought in from the national organization some other people. They diverted them to come in, and for the... They set a record for the first time to hold the event. They set a record for over 600 participants, set a record nationwide. So that shows a lot. We have a lot of runners here, right, in Rutherford County? A lot of patriotism as well. I see somebody in the back. I feel like the teacher on romper room. I look through my magic mirror and I see Anita White sitting in the back under her statements and announcements. Today is Miss Anita White's birthday. She's retired from, how many years? 38 years in our election. Happy birthday, Anita. We miss you around here, Anita. Thank you. Don't know what's going on without you. So, last statement and announcement, I want to talk about Nick, our attorney here. His wife's at the hospital, and he got secret double permission to come tonight and be with us. Expecting a second child, right?
Not quite at the hospital, but she's in what I call pre-labor, so I guess there's a step before labor labor.
A pre-labor.
But she's doing just fine. I think she's listening. Yeah, and so maybe by the weekend, I'll have a baby boy in my arms.
Well, congratulations. All right. Any other statements and announcements? Seeing none, we'll stand in adjournment.